Motion carries, I have 1142. 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 Motion carries, I have 1142.
Welcome to this special meeting of the McAllen City Commission.
Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to today's city, special city commission meeting. And generally, we don't have too many of these, but I think something occurred last week that it's very important that we need today to discuss a very important issue that happened last week and that the community really isn't in uproar about what happened and they're demanding that we do something. And a lot of times they request, but I think this is more a demand and I think we need to really take a look at it. So thank you all for being here at the community. I know we have TABC here with us. Thank you, Lieutenant. So we need to take action. We need to see what we need to do. So what do we have?
Thank you, Mayor. What we have for you today is a presentation and discussion regarding city zoning overlay districts and in particular, the cultural overlay district that encompasses much of South Seventeenth Street, the downtown area. I would recommend to the commission that we take some public comment to start the meeting. We had Angie Almaguer sign up.
Yes.
And so I recommend that since she did sign up, we give her her full three minutes, but I do know that we have several members of the community here. And if any of them would like an opportunity to address the commission, I would recommend that you give them each one minute.
Certainly. Okay, who do we have first?
Angie Almaguer.
Excuse me, I'm a little nervous.
Don't, don't reason to be nervous.
The good thing is they're gonna listen to you. So don't be nervous. Just give us, give us your name and, and tell them what you want them to hear.
Hi, my name is Angie Almaguer and my address is 1116 P. Con Boulevard.
I'm sorry, Angie, could you move your microphone just a tad closer to you?
How is that?
Very good. There you go.
Much better.
Thank you.
All right, perfect. My name is Angie Almaguer. My address is 1116 P. Con Boulevard. Good afternoon, Mayor Villalobos and city council members. Thank you for the opportunity for me to speak today. I am the general manager over at the Dive on 495 and an aspiring bar owner in here in McAllen. With 18 years in the service industry, both in McAllen and Austin, I come here with passion for the city, for the city's growth and for the future of our hospitality industry. Downtown McAllen is dying. After 15 years of neglect, limited upkeep, underutilized services, and missed investments have left our city's heart struggling. And if we don't act soon, it will only get harder to restore. The problems are clear: underage drinking, over-serving, poorly maintained venues. The laws already exist and the failure to enforce them has allowed these issues to fester. Anyone simply walking downtown on a Friday or Saturday night can see it. Public safety is also at risk. The incident involving Officer Gonzalez, I believe that was her name, captured in viral video showed the officer charging into the crowd alone. Why? Law, our law enforcement downtown is undermanned and lack proper training to de-escalate dispersed crowds without physical force, proper gear, and without support of tools like proper lighting in the streets and street cameras. Without these, we lose a chance to review, learn, and improve. And unless enforcement of Texas laws and TABC laws become consistent, these incidents will continue. When downtown feels unsafe, people take their business elsewhere, crowding areas like Uptown, which has also seen a rise in violence as well. Our city's image is being shaped by viral footage of our worst moments instead of the potential we know exists here. And the stakes are real. In 2014, McAllen set its records of 96.8 million in sales tax revenue and 6% year over year. Entertainment and alcohol-related businesses and sales are a large driver of that growth. With some business owners, owners already looking to move to other cities like Edinburgh and Mission because of the safety, our city risks losing millions in future revenue. So sorry. It doesn't have to be this way. Imagine a downtown that is a true destination, vibrant in music-driven, pedestrian-friendly, and it well-maintained streets and buildings. Like Austin's East Sixth Street, a place that boosts tourism, supports local businesses, food trucks, and makes residents proud. That's why I propose a roundtable between bar owners, business owners, law enforcement, and city leadership. Together, we can develop a realistic plan for a cleaner and safe and livelier downtown. Downtown McAllen has been neglected for so long, but with the vision, enforcement, and collaboration, we can transform it into a thriving showcase of our city's future. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Well, do we have, or actually, if anybody else?
Mayor, we didn't have anybody else sign up for public comment, but I would recommend, I would, I would recommend that the mayor consider allowing additional people to speak.
Yes, and I think we will, but if anybody wants to discuss, generally, we're not responding, but a lot of the times, I think if we talk about, for example, some of the issues that you brought up, I think it's important. Like, for example, a lot of the times, they blame our city for not promoting downtown McAllen, yet we try, we try to do our best, but it's the business owners, it's the property owners that have to invest. We promote, we try to incentivize, but at the very, very end, it's, it's the owners. And a lot of times, it may lace, it's out of our hands, but believe me, we try. The issue of, of sales taxes, and, and the reason I bring this up is sometimes people say that they won't do anything because of those taxes. But I can assure you that 17, 18, 19-year-olds are not the drivers of sales taxes. If they come to a bar, first of all, if they're drinking alcohol, they shouldn't. If they're drinking Coca-Cola and Sprite, they're really not generating those taxes. So we need to do something. We need to act.
Yeah, Mayor, it might help for the commission to see the presentation that we put together.
Is anybody else who wants to talk?
Yes.
I had a gentleman raise their hand back there. Come, can you come forward?
Generally, we don't do it this way, but we are this time. Go ahead.
So, Mayor, I do recommend one minute per speaker. Just give us your name and your address, please.
Yes, my name is Jason Zuniga. I have a, a bar establishment there at 209 South Seventeenth, Suite B. We're not, the first time we have a bar, we had other bars there, very successful bars doing downtown. And, you know, we all know the issue that's going on there. And foremost, the most important situation is that, make it clear and simple, there's a lot of establishments, owners that shouldn't be there owning a bar, which drive and impose for minors to come in. You know, you open doors to minors, we're gonna have more minors coming in. Because for some reason, you know, they just have not felt the weight of the law and the pressure of not, not doing it. You know, so honestly, there's only like five people or six people in the street that should really be owning a bar. All the other people there should not have any business in their hands with the bar. Now, I know it's complex because at the time of leasing to somebody, you know, whoever are the landlords and have, you know, their, their, their space to be leased to somebody, they wanna generate a revenue, right? So I think that we need to have maybe, you know, a more closure, the city of McAllen Commission, a closure with the tenants and see, hey, who are you gonna rent to? What are they gonna be doing? And maybe even a price fix, because we have some people doing $2 beers, $1 shots. What kind of people are you gonna be attracting to the, to the, to the city, you know, to the, to the downtown area? Just much people that they're not gonna be generating too much revenue and giving you issues. So I think it's more of a, of a getting together with the tenants and the city commission. Hey, who are you gonna rent to? What are they gonna do? What are they gonna be promoting? You know, because are you gonna be opening doors to minors? And, and the city of McAllen created the entertainment center, I believe in their field, and they have the jurisdiction to set some points on, on everyone who's gonna open an entertainment, you know? In fact, I, I believe that the 21 and older, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a milestone to start this, but there are many more other issues. But the main one is that one. Then the other one is, who is gonna operate a bar? What are you gonna be doing with that bar? You know, having a bar is not just, you know, I have beer, I have lights, I have music, and I get two, three guys in the street and serving free drinks to minors. That's what they do. That's not opening a bar. That's not, you know, a healthy environment of entertainment. We have that thing, looks like a, like a pulgar of bars, you know, they, they ruin the street. All these people that shouldn't be there, they ruin the street. You know, the people that we had years ago, they don't wanna come there no more. You know, and, and, and that, the area that we have, you know, because of the location, the geographic and everything, it's a great place to do business. You know, I'm pretty sure we would have other bigger, maybe franchises coming into that, to that, to that street. And they're not gonna come. They're not gonna come.
Please wrap up your comment.
They're, they're not gonna come because, you know, it's just not, not, you know, you know, in any way, safe for them to come in, in any aspect. So that's one of my words. Just try to work together with everyone and see who's owning those places and attracting more minors to the street.
Thank you, Mr. Zuniga. Thank you.
And that one of the biggest challenges that we have, the interest of the property owners, the interest of the people leasing and operating the bars, and then the interest of public safety, and that's precisely the reason we're here. And once again, we told the community we'd take action. We're gonna have a presentation after a few more comments. And I assure the public, that our community, that our downtown district is gonna be safe. Who do, who else do we have?
Mayor, we have several over here also that does well. Take it on. We can please just have your name and address.
Hello, my name is Lauren Haskins and I'm at 1701 Tamarack Avenue here in McAllen. So I'm gonna play devil's advocate a little bit here. Violence isn't just an age issue. You can be 21, 25, 30, and still cause problems downtown, anywhere really. My concern with making this a 21 and up area is the perception of success. I fear that by removing this age group, having less people in that area, it, it might give a perception of a less successful entertainment district. And my fear is that that might further deteriorate the kind of business, the business and the entertainment district in Seventeenth Street. Now, a lot of businesses over the past few years have been moving towards the Uptown area, and they've created their own little environment. My concern with driving people farther up north is it's not a walkable area. Every time people go from one club area to another, they get in their cars. So that causes a lot more potential conflicts of, of contact with drunk driving. So I think that, for better or worse, it's important that we keep Seventeenth Street alive if we wanna have entertainment here in McAllen area, if we wanna be the entertainment destination for the valley. And it's in our best interest to make sure that we keep on having those bodies there. Now, keep in mind, more enforcement is needed. That's, that's not up for debate, whether it's TABC or us going to the state and, and the state having the harsher penalties on the state level for these types of offenses. That is the answer. I really don't think that limiting the age will do good for the, the downtown area, even if they're not really creating revenue. The point is, their body's there and they're making it appear that it's a successful place to be on a Friday and Saturday night. And of course, I also wanna say, it would be beneficial to look into pedestrian corridors along Seventeenth Street, permanent pedestrian corridors, that could even open up things to lighting in the center of the area, maybe even kiosk real estate. So there are a lot of opportunities for Seventeenth Street. We just need to really look into it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
Who else do we have?
I saw another couple of hands. We can please just have your name and address.
Hello, Mayor. My name is Jair Cruz. I currently became owners with several locations on Seventeenth Street, which is 118 South Seventeen, which is currently closed, and three more locations in that area that right now they're not currently operating. We have been thinking of opening a bar there in that area. I'm here just more for the solution. I'm here, I know there's big problems with the underage, and I agree with that. It's, it's become a problem in that area with the, we've seen even younger than 17-year-olds there. The idea is, I remember we had a New Year's celebration down there and the streets were blocked. I believe that one of the solutions will be if we block those, those entrances to the Seventeenth Street and have barricades and even have metal detectors to enter Seventeenth Street and be able to, even before they go into that location on Seventeen, to give them the opportunity to show their, their ID into that location. I don't know how legal that would be, but on Seventeenth Street, which is going into the club environment, I believe that one, that's one of the solutions, putting some type of barricades where there will be security from the city or even from the owners from the area to, to provide some type of, getting all together and pay for that, you know? Pay for us to have on each street that enters into that location to be able to monitor who goes in there. We've been reluctant to go into Seventeenth Street for the same reason, that the revenue that comes in for being that, it's hard for the adults to go out there and spend. It's more of the young kids that are going down there. So I'm, I'm pro for them to go on an age limitation, and I think we, we can make that downtown area, the downtown district, the entertainment, to get better, you know? It's been a roller coaster all the time. Like one of the guys said, there's people out there that should not have a bar there for the reason that they're not caring for what is supposed to have as code enforcement, TABC laws, and all these different type of city ordinance that should be in place and they should be complying. I do wanna mention that it was, it is difficult sometimes to go through the city process for them to make it easier for the business owners to be able to get that permit to get guidance of what they're supposed to be getting. Police, talking about police and the enforcement that is out there, yes, they need more support. Yes, they need more equipment and also training on, instead of making things worse, diffuse it, diffuse the fights. Cause a lot of that we've seen in person. I seen when, it's a lot of people, I understand, and there's not many cops. So I see that they come aggressive towards the people around. So we gotta just make sure that it's diffusing, not making the things worse. So we want to keep that downtown area fun again and also entertaining for the families. We want restaurants. We want restaurants to be there. We want more, more type of entertainment, you know? Also doing some type of entertainment from the city in that Seventeenth Street. Those are my comments, and I believe that it'll be something that we can work together.
Mayor, I think we have two more back here.
Yeah, and one of the things is that we have a, our city has a population of about 160,000. So it is difficult to, to, you know, just get officers and concentrate them in an area that we really shouldn't. What really do need is to have people active lines, to stop doing what they're doing and to have our businesses keep people that are underage from drinking, from keeping them from the area. If everybody does what they're supposed to do, we, we're the third safest city in the country, first safest city in the state of Texas. This is unacceptable. Who's next?
We got a couple more. Well, yes, sir. Come forward. Yes, sir. We just have your name and address, sir.
Okay. Yes, my name is Bill Ravita. The McAllen address I have is 1001 South Tenth Street. I've been getting my mail there for a long time. I lived in McAllen for a long time, currently live in Mission. Downtown, the first time it was brought to my attention other than the other day was when a young man came knocking on my door in Mission at 3:00 in the morning, says, your daughter's downtown. She was 19 years old. She's downtown, she's dancing with an older man. What? I didn't even know she was gone. She pushed out the screen and left the door, the door not locked to her bedroom. And, you know, that was, that was quite a shock. I lived here in McAllen for a long time. I used to live on, on Jackson, and I'm familiar with this area. I'd say a couple of things. I grew up in Austin, and during the 60s, you didn't walk down E-Sixth Street, I mean, in the, not even in the daytime, unless you were pretty tough, you know? And now, you know, look what it is. I just heard that brought up. And I would say a couple of things. You know, what makes Sixth Street work? The University of Texas is there. That's, that's clientele. The Austin PD is, is very close. That's, that's, that's some protection. But what else makes it work? I think when McAllen, which, you know, Seventeenth Street was pretty similar to what E-Sixth Street used to be, and Mayor, I guess it began with Mayor Montalvo and then Mayor Cortez, when they wanted to make this an entertainment district, they referred to Sixth Street and, and the Riverwalk, which also once upon a time was a blighted area. So I, I would say when, when you have your discussions, I'm not a bar owner, I knew one that has disappeared back in 210. But I'm not a bar owner, but as a citizen, as a parent, grandfather, I'd say, when you get your committee together, make sure some parents are involved in it. You know, what kind of parenting permits so many 17, 18, 15, 16-year-olds downtown at, at those hours? What are, what are the parenting issues? And beyond that, look at what makes the Riverwalk work and what makes Sixth Street work. And thanks for allowing me to, to speak. It's a pleasure.
Thank you, sir. Do we have one more? Yes. Yes, sir. If we can please just have your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Alyssa Cantu. Sorry, I don't usually publicly speak. 322 South Sixteenth Street. I own The Gremlin.
Oh, gremlin.
We throw all age shows. We also throw 18 and plus shows. We have a restaurant. We have a beer and wine license. We've never had a problem with over-serving, serving minors, or any kind of fights or infractions that may happen. And I think that's because we focus on security and we focus on the rules. TABC tells us, we have to ID every single person that comes in. We ID every single person who walks to the bar. It doesn't matter if you look 40, if you look 18, 17, we ID you, cause that is the rules. I think this is a failure on other bars, liquor bars, not following TABC protocol. Maybe turning a blind eye because of money. I don't think that this is a problem with the establishments here in Seventeenth, Sixteenth, Fifteenth Street, North McAllen, South McAllen. It doesn't matter. I think the problem is, is that TABC might be falling behind on their checkups. And I do feel that we do need more policing on the streets of downtown McAllen. I'm not opposed to that. I saw the video. I think it was absolutely horrible. But I think we need more people there to police the, the people outside the bars, and we need TABC to police the bars themselves, to make sure that they're not over-serving, as was the case in a bar not too far away from my bar, and to not serve minors. We should know this. As a restaurant or bar owner, we should know that clearly we should not be serving minors. We should be checking IDs thoroughly. And I think the only way that that's gonna happen is that if there's more boots on the ground to do so. That's the only thing I have.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Alexander.
We're so glad that we have Lieutenant Puente from TABC and, and individuals that really are concerned about the issues we have at hand, and we are. So we'll be acting. Do we have anybody else?
Yes, Mayor, we have Mr. Alexander from the Flying Walwers.
You know what, and I think we all agree, there's some good businesses on Seventeenth Street. There's some good businesses, but there's some bad ones.
James Alexander, Flying Walwers, downtown McAllen. So I decided, I wasn't even gonna speak, but I've already heard things going, going in the wrong direction. As you move forward, I was gonna hope to give you a little bit of direction. One, don't figure out who's to blame. TABC had their budgets cut big time. You're gonna have to pick up the slack. Then, take responsibility. Then take responsibility, don't worry about who it is to blame. Please, I'm going to say that twice because it's so important. The other thing is, I, I heard you go off about the, making it all 21. I think, I mean, it doesn't really affect me, my sales might actually go up a little bit, right? But the truth is, it's insulting. 18 year olds can fight and die in Iraq. 18 year olds walk into that booth and they vote for you, Mr. Mayor. For you to tell me that an 18 year old is incapable of taking care of himself or handling himself with any sort of maturity just because he happens to be in an establishment that serves 21 year olds, it's insulting. So please be careful with that kind of line. You're going to make whatever decision you want. But also remember that these 18 year olds, they're in your community, you owe a responsibility to them. And just keeping them off the street is not taking care of them. If the city of McAllen has any kind of real direction or any kind of real leadership, you realize that these are our children and we want to see them protected. Bill talked about his 19 year old daughter, I'm sure he was a good father, his 19 year old daughter walked out and went to Seventeenth Street and he didn't know about it. That's a lot of parents. Because our kids are rebellious and our kids are going to live, they're going to go out, they're going to try to have a good time. I'd also like to remind you that about six months ago, you had a young man, Nicky Rowe, tragically died. He jumped off his roof, they were drinking at a party, the parents provided that alcohol. Underage drinking is not going away, it's a nationwide deal. McAllen doesn't have to be embarrassed by it because it's happening in Austin, it's happening in Houston, and it's happening in Corpus. Your real question is, the 18 year olds are there, how can we protect our children? And please focus on that. Y'all have a good one.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Would you have your name and address, please?
Hello, my name is Brian Mandurabong. I live in 1821 Jefferson Avenue. So I've been a bartender for about 10 years, managed a few spots. I used to work downtown and one night in downtown, I was held up at knife point and luckily we did apprehend that man. How we found him though, wasn't through services that we had, it was through my phone app. I was lucky enough to have that resource, other people don't have that resource. So I think it is vital to provide something for a, an entertainment district specifically and any, anything in similarity to it to have the correct infrastructure, like cameras and proper lighting. And like other people suggested, of course, proper pedestrian areas for like, let's say Uber and Lyft. And it doesn't stop just downtown. I think downtown, it is being highlighted at the moment because of recent events, but I think it's important to keep this in mind and like somebody else mentioned, uptown is also becoming more violent. We need to start with downtown, see what we can do there and implement that everywhere else as well. City enforcement as well. Just looking into code enforcement, I've worked at a few bars where, you know, someone will come by, check all the permits, great, maximum capacity, what is it, awesome. But does anyone ever really enforce that? I really don't think so. I've heard plenty of places that get overcrowded and that's where a lot of the trouble starts, you know, people start bumping into each other, there's, you know, the, the wrong people that shouldn't be drinking that, you know, else's bartenders try to keep an eye on, continue to drink. Hey, I cut that guy off or I'm probably not going to serve that guy anymore, I'm going to keep an eye on him. That guy goes into the corner, it's so full, that person gets a beer from somebody else because the place is so full. So, you know, assistance and from the city and the proper infrastructure, I think, starting with downtown, implementing it uptown and, you know, anywhere else that has multiple locate, multiple bars. I've worked, you know, in downtown and I've worked up in, I don't know what we want to refer to the area, but north of Trenton, there's a number of bars that are growing there as well. It seems like that's the direction that that's going to be heading as well. And like I said, this, this seems like an early project per se that we can implement up there as well. And as far as the downtown goes, that was really well put, we really do need to protect the 18 year olds that are going to be there because it's going to happen. And I've been to a bar in my, I'd say I was maybe like 22 at the time, where I found a friend's little sister working, 16 years old. What is a 16 year old doing, serving shots as a shot girl, surrounded by old men? Well, to her, but you get my point. That shouldn't be allowed. Why, we do need to look into these businesses, we're not going to point fingers, but really we need to do more, we need to have more efforts into regulating everything that's going on. I'll just leave it at that. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, it looks like.
One hand went up there, Mayor.
I think about one more, Mayor, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I guess while we stand, wait, the issue of self-responsibility, why do we have to be enforcing the occupancy of the limitation? If you know there's too many people in there, why don't you stop it? If you know you're serving somebody you're not supposed to, why don't you stop it? What happens with self-responsibility by the operators? Why does government have to stand in there? We generally allow business or want to allow business to self-regulate, to do what they're supposed to do. We shouldn't have to be here. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Hi, my name is Patrick Godecia, I live at 2008 North Seventeenth Street, not the entertainment district, but further north by the high school and the police station. I am a concert promoter and I've been booking concerts for going on 20 years now. Most of them have been all ages shows. I used to do them at the McAllen Creative Incubator, rest in peace, the old location that's been bulldozed, but the new location's also beautiful. I've gone from booking at the VFW on Second, on Second Street to the McAllen Performing Arts Center. Most of these shows, again, all ages. And I'm not here to tell anybody what to do, but I do want to suggest that while I absolutely appreciate, you know, the intention of this meeting, I think something should happen, I just think it should be considerate of the establishments downtown that in my opinion, that I have worked with historically and that I do see that are doing things right, that are really trying. You know, I think a 21 plus solution is good. I also think perhaps a curfew would be phenomenal as well. After a certain point, who knows? But I will say, you know, there are bad apples downtown, but I work with Cinel Ray, The Gremlin, I've worked with the Flying Walrus, there are people that in my opinion are doing right. A lot of the people that are screwing up downtown are not literally going into downtown establishments, they're just walking the streets. We can make it 21 plus, but what's going to stop these kids from pulling up, drinking in their car and then walking the streets aimlessly? That has nothing to do with Walrus, that has nothing to do with Cinel Ray, that has nothing to do with The Gremlin or Baby Arcade. And so I'm just asking for, you know, not common sense solution because I respect everybody here, I'm just saying some more critical insight. And I thank you all for hosting this workshop, by the way, you know. But I just did want to say that all age shows, they sound awful and, you know, given what everybody has said right now, I know I can come off as the bad person, but they're also very important. I was 16 years old one time getting dropped off at La Virial to watch the Toadies play and it changed my life. I fell in love with rock music that night, as corny as it sounds, you know? Like resets or self-reliance, you know, my parents trusted me, but I know people who've been assaulted in their twenties, it's going to happen regardless, you know? And we should just try to protect the community as is. So if there's anything that I can say is just like, you know, we should invest in the youth, but literally invest in the youth, try to protect them, try to have more police officers, God forbid curfews, but I, I, I just do want to advocate for the youth. I think they're beautiful, more spaces for them, you know? Common sense type solutions, that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Ready for presentation?
Yes, Mayor. We heard some interesting comments and I, I feel compelled to address a couple of things before I get into the presentation. One of the things I heard reference to is our 18 year old children who are able to, 18 year olds, I don't want to say children, who are able to vote, who are able to enlist in the army and go fight, but then we refer to them as children. That's a bit of an oxymoron. To demand that the government protect children who are adults was, was a little bit troubling to me. With respect to serving minors, and you heard several comments about operators that apparently are serving minors, and we'll talk about what some of the limitations on operations are in the Ecod here in a second. One of the things that I think we need to keep in mind is there is only a certain amount of regulation that we could reasonably impose anywhere. But we have to have an expectation that the rules and regulations that the city put in place will be enforced not by police or code enforcement or the fire department when it comes to fire code, but by the establishments. At the end of the day, these rules are what we expect the establishments to respect. And I'm, Mayor, you mentioned several times, our partners with TABC are here and I know we met with them the other day and we appreciate their presence here today, there, there's only so much they can do. You can't put somebody in a bar and know if, if somebody eligible to buy a drink is buying a drink and slipping it to minors. The operators have to take responsibility for what's going, going on inside of their establishments. And if they can't maintain a level of control and decorum, then we need to think about who's operating there. So we wanted to show you a picture. This is the downtown area. On this map, you'll see highlighted, the blue area is the Ecod, the Entertainment Cultural Overlay District. The green area is the downtown retail overlay district. These areas in the heart of the city were established in 2005 to promote a variety of entertainment and cultural interests. Those codes that were originally established then were updated in 2008 to comply with various changes to state law as they related to certain zonings within proximities to daycares to allow for certain variances is to clarify permits in existence would continue beyond sunset. The original Ecod did have an expiration date. In 2016, the city commission reconsidered the ordinance creating the overlay district and did away with the sunset, but did leave the commission the option to at any time it wanted revoke the district. Permits in effect were that to happen would continue until their expiration. The original vision of the Ecod was, like I said, to support and encourage a variety of entertainment and cultural establishments. To develop diverse and rich experiences, a mix of adult and family oriented uses, support established retail and revitalize the downtown area, and encourage new retail to develop in the area. To assist in that process, the city created what was called special use permits. This would avoid the necessity of an application for a CUP hearings before planning and zoning in the city commission. It lightened parking requirements, exempted certain minimum distance requirements. Those permits would all be valid for three years. They were designed to be non-transferable so that the city would know who the operators were. The permits are issued and may be revoked for violation by the planning director and in such cases can be appealed to the zoning board of adjustments.
When you say violation, one violation or multiple or what?
One violation. It, it could be any violation, it is within the discretion of the planning director to determine whether revocation is appropriate. So, you know, let's say, you know, a light was out when, when an inspection happened, you know, okay, we'll let that go. But we did have people speak to you today that had such egregious violations, and these were prior to some of the changes that, that were made to allow the, the planning director to make revocations, that they were the parties to lawsuits by the city to have those establishments closed because of their absolute failure to adhere to the minimum standards imposed by the city.
Excellent. And before, before we go too far, if we un-designate, then they would have to go to the CUP requirements?
So what are the requirements, the, the minimum requirements that are placed on all SUPs? That the establishments provide adequate lighting, something that we heard resonate in the calls from the owners themselves, that they, that they maintain sufficient security personnel based on their occupancy, that they maintain security cameras. Another call that we heard repeatedly in the comments today, that there be no amplified music over 85 decibels outside, that they use age verification software, and so there is software scanners, you have to take an ID, scan it, it has to be valid and, and tell the person letting somebody go into the bar that the person is 21. Now, does that mean you can't take your sister's ID with you? You know, I mean, there still has to be some level of reasonable application by the proprietors in the use of the equipment. To mark those underage with ink so that operators within the establishment knows who should have drinks and who should not. And to, upon request from the city, provide reports to the city related to those under 21 in the area.
Mr. City Manager, on the adequate lighting, are you referring to the exterior lighting to the street and to the alley or are you talking within the establishment itself?
Exterior.
Exterior only.
Yes, sir. There was discussion about street closures. The standard closure time, I believe it is Thursday through Saturday, it might be Wednesday, is nine o'clock. Barricades are erected. Now, remember, some of the bike rack barricades, I mean, they're not very heavy and, and patrons move them, we have put some mechanical ballards down there now that, that do address some of that. The closures occur at Seventeenth and Austin, Bicentennial in Chicago, 16th and Beaumont. And so you can see what that looks like, remember, those are one-way streets. So if, if you look there, you'll see the traffic closures. And then the police department does provide for a couple of extra closures on some of the side streets. But the one-way traffic north and south is blocked off. The purpose of the Ecod was to revitalize the downtown area. And so what are some of the options that the city has and additional ways that we can garner support from the establishment operating there? 380 agreements are a tool that are available to the city. Rent buy-down programs, the density of the bars may be such that a program to change some of the establishment down there may make sense. Refresh 50/50 is a program available to help upgrade some of the storefronts. We will be bringing to you in another workshop, different ideas about some additional, much more capital heavy changes that the city wants to make or wants to suggest to you that we, we invest in the downtown area. I cannot emphasize enough though, at the end of the day, it's the responsibility, especially in a bar, of the operator to know what's going on inside that establishment. I, I can't imagine any bar owner here would want police code enforcement walking around inside of their establishment, policing the fund, policing entertainment. That, that's, that's not a healthy relationship between government and business. Austin, Dallas, San Antonio, in a lot of their entertainment districts, there was specific reference to Sixth Street, so I'll bring that up. There is a landowners association in Sixth Street that got together and agreed on minimum standards for the people they would rent to. And in their leases, the landowners are holding their tenants responsible for the behavior of what's going on inside those establishments. And the landowners have the right to cancel leases and ask businesses that aren't And the landowners have the right to cancel leases and ask businesses that aren't operating in a responsible way to leave. And I believe that was very largely responsible for a lot of the turnaround you saw in Austin. It was the retail community taking responsibility for what they did. There are some additional things that we would like to discuss with you in terms of enforcement. We would need to have those conversations in executive session.
Any questions regarding these issues?
Just on this last slide, are, are there not any federal grant monies, or even foundation monies, or opportunities that would help either reenter, reenter, invigorate downtown areas or cultural districts?
I'm sure that there are. I don't know of any as I sit here right now, but we would be happy to research that.
Okay.
But, but even locally, we do it ourselves, but the landowners or the property owners a lot of times do not want to invest in their own property because they lease it.
Right.
So as long as it's leased, they don't care.
They're not going to put a dime in the investment.
Yet, they believe it's us, not incentivizing. We will and we can, but it's going to be up to the landowners, the property owners. If no other questions, we'll recess into executive session.
...
...